the agenda tonight because Councilmember Brian Bagley is out of town with helping his dad with an illness. And I think it's important that all of us be here for that discussion. And I guess now we've got a special guest, Superintendent Don Haddad would like to make a presentation.
Technology, that's a wonderful thing. Thank you, Mayor Coombs and city council members, I appreciate it. I wanted to just share with you a little bit of information about an upcoming bond initiative. And one of the things that I always preface is that I am on vacation at this point in time. Literally, I take vacation time prior to speaking about the bond, so I'm here on behalf of myself at this point. Recently, the Board of Education for the St. Brain Valley Schools approved to put a $260 million, $340,000 bond initiative on November's ballot. And the process that led to that was a pretty significant sized committee with a number of representatives throughout each of our communities. We have 411 square miles, and we have a variety of communities included in the St. Brain Valley Schools. So we had membership on the task force from each of the communities representative of different types of folks, business leaders, elected officials, parents, et cetera. And we looked at all of the capital construction needs that we have in our district. The last time we passed a bond was in 2008. It was for $189 million. And we were able to do all of the work that we promised that we would do at a very high level in terms of quality. And we were able to outperform the budget by approximately $23 million, which enabled us to do even more than what we had originally promised our community. Since that time, we have refinanced six times and have saved approximately $37 million in terms of lowering interest rates for our community as well. After looking at all of the needs, which were pretty significant, well over the amount of $260 million, we decided to go only for what it was that we absolutely needed in four areas. One was to accommodate the growth. And the growth is significant in St. Brain. A trend over the last five years is approximately 800-plus students each year additional. And we see that continuing for quite some time. We have 32,000 students, but we're going to see that growth continue for a long time. We were the 10th largest school district when I became superintendent. Currently, we're the seventh out of 178. So you can see how quickly it's moving, and we're headed towards sixth very fast. But we looked at growth as being 68% of the overall bond. And then another portion, the remaining significant portion was for renovation and safety. And then finally, some restructuring of classrooms to create science labs and space for innovation. And this is a bond. It is not a mill levy override. So it goes on for about 20 years, and then it'll sunset. So it's not something that goes on forever in perpetuity. We finally came to the figure which translates into about $1.82 per month for every $100,000 worth of home value. And that's at the high end. And we wanted to put the high-end figure out there. We think it might end up being less, but we didn't want to say something less knowing that it could be $1.82. We also know that every opportunity we get to refinance, we will do that as well. The other thing that I would like to share with you is if you look at districts across the state to show you how conservative in nature this particular bond is, Thompson is going for a bond of $288 million, and they are half our size. And Pooter is going for a bond of $350 million, and they are smaller than us. Last year, Boulder went for a bond for $575 million, and they are smaller than us as well. So we really went for what we only need. It's absolutely critical. We didn't go for what we would like to have, only for what we need. And we wanted to do that out of respect for our community and the support that they've given us over the many years. The other thing that I think is noteworthy is each of these districts that I've mentioned to you and many others, they're not only going for a bond, but they are also going for a mill levy override at the same time. And they don't receive any less money than we receive from the state. But the way in which we structured our budget is where we can, we live within our means, and we make our money go as far as it can go, and we don't spend more than we have. Other districts have adopted a tax-and-spend model where they keep spending, and then they go for another mill levy. Keep spending, go for another mill levy, keep spending. We've adopted a model that means we do not have to go for a mill levy override at this point. And so I say that only to emphasize how seriously we take this issue when we go to our community and say, we need your support. There is no other way in the state of Colorado to generate these type of funds for capital construction. It is the only option that you have. Where we have options is how much, and how much of an impact it will have on our community. And so we wanted to be clear on making sure that we took that very seriously, and we're very respectful. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions. I also left a brochure on your desk in front of you to take a look at some of the wonderful things that are happening in our school district. Bob Smith, who is our board president, has been with our board going on nearly a decade. He's an outstanding support system as well. And I don't know if he, if you have any questions for him either, that would be fine.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I was part of the committee that went to several meetings and heard all the pros and cons of this. And I thought it was very well done. It had a broad spectrum of people throughout the community. So, you know, it became clear to me that this is great for the city of Longmont. It's great for St. Brain School District. And the fact that, you know, we're not, even though we're not building, you know, a new high school here in the city of Longmont, or, you know, we're adding on to schools and making schools safer and fixing critical infrastructure in schools, we're investing in our schools, we, most of the money, or a significant amount of the money is being spent in Longmont. Longmont's share is higher than all the other cities in the St. Brain. So, you know, one of the pushbacks I've heard is, well, you know, they're building a new school in Erie, so why should we support Erie? Well, you know, we're all one area, economic area, and we're all partners in this. And, you know, schools are, in my mind, the best economic development engine that we have. So if we want to grow jobs, we have to grow our schools, and we have to support our education. Sir, anybody else like to ask any questions?
You know, one other thing that I would like to add to your point is exactly what you said, Mayor. We're going to be adding on significant classroom space in southwest Longmont. And you also see the growth happening up by 66 in Longmont. We're also going to be doing considerable renovation and upgrades in our Longmont schools. And I'm just saying Longmont, but this is happening everywhere, to your point. And we're going to be upgrading safety, putting safety and security cameras in each elementary school, because we already have them in the high schools, and making sure there are double vestibule doors in all of our elementary schools, so that when you come in, you have to be rerouted. And, you know, we always hope and pray that we never have the kind of tragedy that we read about all the time in the paper. I think the most recent one was in South Carolina. But I believe, you know, where a young man went into an elementary school and shot several students in a, we have to do everything in our power to protect our children and our staff. And we have to make sure that our schools are viable places for our children to get a great education. And that's what we're doing. And I really appreciate your support.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
I really appreciate the bond and the fact that you're doing this. I don't think most people do understand that it is the only way to get capital improvements, to fix schools, and to build schools, and to make all kinds of improvements. They think that it's provided by property tax. But in support of something the mayor said about people not understanding why we should support Erie, well, the kids in Erie will grow up to be the workers who come to Longmont to work, just as our kids may go to Erie to work. Every kid in the state of Colorado and every kid in the United States deserves a good education, because that's the future. So it's in everybody's interest to take care of kids.
That's right. And, you know, the size of our district is actually a benefit, because given the assessed valuation is what brings the cost down to $1.82 per month. If we didn't have the other areas, the cost would be much higher for a singular area. So it's not about what's going to happen here, and what's going to, it's about what's going to happen in the St. Brain Valley Schools. And because we're all supporting, it drops the burden for everyone. And that's absolutely important. And one more- And one more last point, to your point, is not only is it the only way that we can generate the revenue, there is no other option. When people talk about things like the marijuana tax, it's important to know that we're not receiving any revenue for capital construction from the marijuana tax. That's a myth that's out there. Our district will not be receiving any revenue for capital construction from the marijuana tax. And it's just important to understand that. There is no other way for us to generate these dollars. And there is no other option, because we have the students that need to go to school, and we have the facilities that need to be maintained, just like anybody's home or building would need to be maintained. And we have to take safety very seriously. We can never take that for granted. So, thank you.
Thank you. One other question, Councilmember Finley?
I don't have a question. I just, I have every faith that the voters will approve this. It's needed. I think everybody wants to support our kids. And thanks to your leadership and the leadership of the school board, they have faith in our school district. And my only question is, where can I get a yard sign?
Thank you. You can get a yard sign from, there's a website called Yes for Kids that can direct you to one. You could also contact, I was going to say, "Contact me," but you can't do that, because I don't have any yard signs. But if you, if you look at the website, Yes for Kids, there's a place. Grassroots St. Brain is a separate organization, and there's a separate campaign committee, separate from our district, and they are organizing that, and they would be happy to get you one. And thank you very much for your support.
Thank you for coming and speaking to us tonight.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Okay, now it's time for public invited to be heard. First is Heidi Storitz.
I was actually here to speak about the construction defect issue. So if that's being postponed, I'll hold my comments till the...
Well, you're still welcome to speak.
Do you want to receive the comments?
Sure. As long as you're here.
Sure. Okay. So again, my name is Heidi Storitz. I live at 7324 North 83rd Street. I'm also a legal advocate for homeowners and homeowner associations who are struggling with the issue of construction defects. And as you're contemplating what's next potentially in Longmont, I wanted to just raise a couple of points with you. I understand that you're considering the proposition of forcing homeowners to accept repairs from builders and developers, and we call that sort of the absolute right to repair. It's what Lakewood enacted, where homeowners are actually prohibited from stopping a builder from performing a repair in their home, even if they don't think that repair is going to solve the problem. Again, I would discourage you to take an action along those lines. We already have what is called a right to repair, the notice of claim right to repair process, where the homeowners and the builder, if they're sincere in getting to an appropriate repair, can work with each other to make that happen. But it's not an absolute right, meaning the builder can't force a homeowner to accept a repair that they don't think will solve the problem. The notice of claim right to repair process that's been in place since 2003 does work if both parties are sincere. And I will tell you that I was involved in an issue here with respect to Houver Place, where the homeowners association were concerned about certain issues with their developer. They got me involved. We had a conversation. We had a sit-down with the gentleman, actually, in their office in Greeley. They came to a resolution. The builder developer stepped up to the plate. No lawsuit was necessary. No legal action was necessary. The process can work as it exists if people are sincere about making it work. Secondly, I understand you're considering requiring some sort of forced notice to homeowners before a lawsuit is filed. I will tell you that there are already statutory disclosure obligations that exist on the books. So those protections already exist for homeowners. Disclosure is required. So it's probably not something that you need to re-legislate. I also understand that you're considering forced arbitration. And just over a year ago, I was here when staff presented information about arbitration, binding arbitration, and I was shocked, because the staff member said, "Well, they go to mediation, they go to arbitration, and then if that doesn't work, you can go to the court." Well, that's not how forced arbitration works. It is binding. It is non-appellable. You never get to go to court. The other important thing that you need to understand about forced arbitration is we are seeing developers put requirements in declarations that homeowners are bound to. Those requirements make the arbitration process, as they describe it in those declarations, unfair. We see examples where developers are the ones that get to choose who the arbiter is or the arbitration service. The homeowners then have no ability to try to get a fair hearing on their claims. We also see provisions in declarations where developers are requiring that they consent to any legal action, including arbitration. So it's kind of like, I don't know, England with the American colonies, right? England would have had to consent to the American colonies, you know, to fight against them, right? It just doesn't make any sense. Does that mean my time is up?
Yeah, unfortunately. Thank you for coming.
Okay, I'll stop there. I do have a brochure of possible solutions.
You can hand them over to me.
I don't have one for everybody.
Okay, well, we can make copies.
But there are some suggestions for things that you could consider that would solve the problem.
Brian Baer?
Brian Baer, 7552 North 83rd Street. Here tonight to give you an update on the first phase of the Butterball redevelopment, the South Main Station project. I think the last time I was here was in June, and at that time, we had put together some milestones for some key deliverables over the summer. And I wanted to bring you up to speed on that and then talk to you about some of the challenges that we're facing right now. So the milestones that we put in place in June were pretty substantial. They were the completion of our site plan, which we submitted on time, which was, we had two sets of milestones, end of August and September 15th, for the submission of our site plan, our public improvement plan, basically our entitlements for the project. And then we also submitted by the 15th, three of the buildings for building permits. So buildings, buildings along Main Street and the buildings along Second Avenue. So all of those things happened. The other milestone that we, was more of an internal milestone for me, but we got our no further action letter from the state for the cleanup of all of the soil that we had to take off the site. So that was a big milestone that set us back. As you know, we talked about that earlier this year. So making good progress on the milestone front with, in regards to entitlements, plans, site plans, things like that. So all of those documents are now with staff. They're reviewing them in hopes that we can get everything approved. My goal is to get everything approved by November, end of November at the latest. So we're hoping that that goes that direction. What's been a challenge for us and what's really changed since I was here in June has been the capital markets. I don't know if anybody's following what's going on, but particularly with regard to construction lending for apartments has really changed a lot in the last, mainly in the last 60 days. And what's happening is pretty simple. You've heard about a perceived overbuilding of multifamily. Well, it is happening. There's been a lot of units brought on, not only in the Denver metro area in Colorado, but across the country. And so what you have, you have the federal regulators tightening down on the lenders and pulling back, which is making it more difficult to get financing. And so we're caught in that cycle. And what we're going to be doing is asking council for an extension on the start of our construction through the end of next year, so December 31st, 2017. And that will have to be done through our development agreement. And so what I'm asking today, because I might run out of time here, is I'm asking council to instruct staff to bring back an amendment to our development agreement in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I was also going to speak on the construction defects law, and I'm going to choose to come back when you are discussing it. But I thought I would come down and say, if anybody wants a sign for the St. Brain bond issue, you can get it at the Colorado Democratic Party office at 1108 Main Street. There's lots of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Green?
Thank you for having me and hello. My name is Philip Green. I live at 26 Emory Way, and I have two issues I would like to discuss. I'm paying a double utility bill. I pay double for gas, double for light, and double for service. And I don't know who to get to or how to get this straightened out. And another issue, last year, I got a ticket, and the officer informed me that I would have to wait two weeks to call it in. I did that. I paid $189, and they suspended my license. They say I was a day late paying the ticket. One ticket, they suspended my license. Then the state made me pay another fine, plus the city made me pay another fine. And how do I get that straightened out? So now I got a suspended license on my driver's, my driving record, and my insurance went up.
Well, I guess I can't answer your questions, so I'll have to take it offline with staff.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now we've got a... Okay, so now we can go back to motions to direct city manager to add agenda items to future agendas. So you guys want to talk about what was proposed by Brian Baer at this point? Councilmember Moore?
That item is not on the official agenda. The one is published on the website.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a point of order.
Number two?
Yeah. Movements. Yeah, the official agenda is actually, well, I've got two different versions. My version has this motion to direct city manager after public invited to be heard. This version has it before, so I'm not sure which is...
Mine's before as well.
Which one?
Mine actually has it before.
Should be after.
Okay.
It's before.
So I pull it up on the website, it doesn't...
No. It's not on the website.
Not on the website. It's on the website.
But it's on our downloaded Dropbox?
Yes, public doesn't have that.
Okay. You're right.
Just got a point.
So do we know what was actually out there on the website for the public?
That's what I'm trying to find right now, to see what's...
Mayor, that's a product of our software.
Okay.
Because the meeting was already established before you guys changed your rules of procedure and there were items on it, we couldn't, we couldn't roll that into the template. So the website is different than what you got in front of you. So you, your agenda in the Dropbox has that one additional verbiage in it for you to add items to the, to the agenda.
Okay. Councilmember Peck?
I agree with Councilmember Moore that actually this probably should be in the public domain that we're going to do that, to add items to the agenda.
Okay.
Is there any way we can put that on the next?
I recreated all the meetings going forward, so anyone that didn't have an item on it already will have that on it. I'll just have to see. I think the next meeting might be different, but I'll certainly try. I know it's on the posting. It's up there. It's just not on the website.
Is that sufficient as far as letting the public know, having it on the posted agenda out there? I mean, is that sufficient?
The official posting place for your agendas is the bulletin boards.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Hey, Mayor Coombs. Well, now that that's kind of cleared up. And this is something we had put on our gen, excuse me, our rules of procedure, what, some time ago. It's now being added, correct? So I, the official postings are the Civic Center and the library, if I'm not mistaken. Just the Civic Center, excuse me. So it has been noticed. We can, so we didn't make motions at the end of meetings. This is what we all agreed to do ahead of time. I guess my only question would be, I have no problems adding this to the next agenda, next agenda, because either the city manager or the mayor can potentially do that. But is there any other information that we need to have that Brian, from David, or anything else, to go, to move forward to make this happen?
So obviously, if we were to put it on the agenda, we would need to provide all the, like we would at traditional council com. I think the one item I would say is what we were just talking about. This section is not necessarily for discussing an item. This is merely to say that you want to consider an item in the future. And then we would place that item on the future agenda for discussion. That's my understanding of putting that in.
Right. Okay. Then I, go ahead.
Well, you know, he made a point of order. I guess we're kind of in a gray area here.
This has been posted properly.
So it has been posted properly, according to Valerie? Okay, if that's been the case, then I think we can go ahead and instruct city council or city man, or city staff to bring back this as a future item that we can discuss and vote on at that point. I mean, that's all we're doing is just instructing you to put this on a future agenda, so that we can discuss it at a future agenda. And do we?
Do you want a motion?
Councilmember Finley?
I would make the motion that we bring this back as an agenda item in the future.
All right, it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like staff to know that I may not be at the next meeting, so I would like to be part of this discussion. So if you could push it out a little further, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Are you going to vote? That passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Bagley absent. Okay, now we've got a proclamation designating the month of October 2016 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado. And Diane Groff from the Center of People with Disabilities is here to accept the proclamation. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating the month of October 2016 as National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado, where as the citizens of Longmont recognize and celebrate the contributions that people with disabilities have made and continue to make in our communities, and where as workplaces that welcome the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build and... people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. In this spirit, the City of Longmont, Colorado, is recognizing National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month to raise awareness about disabilities, employment issues, and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities, and where as we renew our commitment to upholding principles of nondiscrimination to build an inclusive community. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Alcooms, Mayor, by the virtue of the authority vested in me in the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2016 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Longmont, and encourage all citizens to observe this month with related educational materials to advance the important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task and that their inclusion works throughout the year. Would you like to say anything, Diane?
Yes, thank you. Diane Groff of the Center for People with Disabilities in Longmont, and Jan DeBrowski, our employment...
I don't think your microphone... Oh, it's drawn down now. Okay, great, go ahead.
Jan DeBrowski, our employment specialist, and David Robinson, our executive director. And we are all very excited to be here tonight, celebrating the National Employment Disability Awareness Month. And, you know, a large part of our identity is what we do, and being able to make a contribution in our community is significant. And having this opportunity this month, and it's across the nation, if you hashtag on Twitter "Inclusion Works," there are everyday celebrations going on, and we'll post a little our photo tonight as well. And we also have information packets on the tax incentive credits that are available. We can be available for additional information on helping people feel comfortable in an interview, to being more accessible in your work sites, and what have you. And so, thank you very much for letting us... And Jan has a success story.
Oh, great.
And actually, that's... Thank you for having us here. And this is what it's all about, is this is an example of a person that... We had a client who came to us, and he was on SSI. And you know, with SSI, you don't get a whole lot. But he... And his dream was to have his own business. And he... We've been working with him for three years, and he just had a grand opening with a partner who's going to take him under his wings, and he's going to have his own business pretty soon. So that's what this all creates, and we thank you very, very much.
Wow. Would you like to come forward? All right, now it's time for our study session items.
Mayor Coombs, your agenda item is public hearing and final direction on the 2017 proposed budget, and the 2017 to 2021 proposed capital improvement program. And Teresa Malloy is here.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. So this evening, we'll need to hold our second public hearing, and then we will need final direction from you all so that we can finalize the ordinances to adopt our 2017 budget, and then make the appropriations by fund. So we don't have any new, or I should say additional, information for you this evening. What we included in the council packet was really just a recap of all the changes that we had previously spoken to you all about. We tried to show those by fund, as well as we included a spreadsheet by fund that shows the original proposed budget, the changes, both to revenues and expenses, and then what the new budget numbers are now after those changes. Also included in your packet this evening is another attachment with the fund statements that I spoke to you about last time that we hadn't previously given you. So unless council has questions on any of the changes that we had highlighted in the council communication, it wasn't my intent to go through them again with you this evening because we have already spoken to you about them, but we did want to call those to your attention. Questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Nope.
Okay, so let me just recap where we're at for our budget numbers, total budget numbers now, and then we would recommend that you hold your public hearing before you give us the final direction. So our city charter does require that we hold a public hearing on or before October 1st. We met that requirement last week. We do historically, though, hold two public hearings before we get final direction from you all. And so the total 2017 budget, including all the changes that we've spoke about and that are highlighted in the council communication, is $282,687,946. So that includes $44.3 million in CIP projects total, citywide, and $77.14 million in the general fund. So with that, I'll let you hold your public hearing.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that we'd like to speak at this point about our proposed budget for 2017? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay. So unless council has any additional questions, I think what we would like is final direction from you all on our budget, so the total budget, our capital improvement program, the pay plan, as well as the financial policies.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Okay, well, I move that we give direction to staff to prepare the ordinances for the 2017 proposed budget, 2017 capital improvement program, the pay plan, and...
Financial policies.
Financial policies.
All right. Councilmember Santos made the motion, and Councilmember Moore seconded. Any further questions? All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Great, thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time over the past month.
So now it's time for comments from council members. I first want to start out and say that on October 25th, there's a RTD meeting down in Denver, and they want to discuss BRT on Highway 119, and they want representation from Longmont. And that would start at like 6 o'clock, so I'm not sure that's a regular meeting, how we're going to do this, but if Councilmember Bagley is back, or if somebody else wants to be down there and miss the first half hour of our meeting... Okay, sounds like Joan is volunteering, and we would get you back here by 7:30? Okay?
I was going to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So Councilmember Peck is going to go... Are you going to go as well, Mayor?
I will if we...
If Councilmember Bagley?
Bagley is back.
Okay. Is it possible, Eugene, that we potentially push back our meeting 30 minutes? Is that a possibility that we could do? This is kind of important.
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. The start time is set forth in your council rules of procedure, so if you acted in advance of that to suspend the rules, propose a new time, that should work. That should work.
Well, I'm just wondering if members of council would be willing to do that. You'd start at perhaps 7:30, where at the 4th, we're giving everyone at least 21 days notification that we're going to start on the 7:30 on the 25th. Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah. Excellent.
I'm just looking for consensus.
Right, okay. I think we... That works? Yeah. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, the one consideration that I would ask is that we make sure that the agenda is not super loaded, because starting a half hour late on some of our meetings would push us past the 11 o'clock hour.
Yeah, we'll definitely review it based on the consensus that we've heard from council.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. There was some confusion regarding, in our information packet, regarding the agenda items that may be coming up in the next several weeks. And I understand that how it's done now in SIRE, the program that uses to do the agendas, it's hard to take an item off. Is there another way that we can get at least a list of items that may be coming up in the next month?
Yeah, so based on the conversation that I had with council and the review, that was one of the things you all requested, is a forward-looking list. This is one way to attempt to do it. We actually today found a way to pull those items out, and it's not in the agenda format, but it's in a list I process. And so that's the approach that we'll start using, that'll hopefully make it, bring clarity to it, in that it's a list in the future, and then we'll put a disclaimer that it's subject to change based on schedules and what we're having to deal with.
Well, right, and the information that we got, I mean, it shows that it's a draft agenda, but when people see agenda, they're taking it as, you know, as that's what's actually going to happen, even if it's a draft.
It'll be a list. I think actually what happened on this one, that you can pull things out of the system, but for some reason, I think this one got stuck, or there was some piece in it.
There's always one that gets stuck.
So I know they were working through that side of it. But anyway, we can do the list, and we can bring it together, so it'll be more clear.
So just for clarification, whatever proposed ordinance regarding home grows in marijuana will not be on the October 11th agenda.
No, so if council will remember, we talked about the fact that there's a survey out, and then I asked council direction to have a public meeting to discuss this, and all of that has to occur before it comes back to council.
So it will not be on the October 11th. Not on the October 11th agenda.
Okay, any other comments from council? All right. City manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor and Council.
City attorney, any comments?
Mayor and Council, I just want to clarify on the 25th. So the one thing I didn't know offhand was whether the charter would add additional requirements in order to move that meeting. It actually says that the regular meetings, at least twice a month, add a day and hour to be fixed by the rules and proceedings of each council. And so these are proceedings of council. I think technically, if you wanted to change the time, you would suspend the rules to set the time at 7:30, but it sounded like that was the consensus of council to sort of do that combined motion. So that was it. Thanks.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, just a minute. I forgot. I take it back. Oh, no, it's a study session, so we don't have... Yeah, I was thinking I had another second, but we're good. It's over.
Or adjourned.
Or adjourned.